Let me call to order the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Goes down the agenda, 7 o'clock, which we missed, community input, 7:05 LEPC update and public information session on coronavirus 19, 7:20 discussion with the deer committee, 8:15 the Board of Selectmen input to the 2020 open space plan, 8:45 town administrators' report, 8:55 liaison reports, 9:05 approval of past minutes, and 9:15 adjournment is our potential time anyway. So let me first say, is there any community input this evening?
Yes, I'd like to have something to say.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm Don Allen.
I apologize, everybody, sorry, I was on the FinCom meeting and...
No problem.
I'm Fliesman, you're having a good time, Kate.
Oh, I know.
Alan got us started, Kate.
Thank you.
We're having a community input and Don Allen would like to speak.
Excellent.
Okay, I actually have some slides, but I will, I don't see the button to display the screen, so I can do this without it, I'll be brief. I just want to quickly summarize why bow hunting of deer on town land can't solve a forest health problem caused by deer overpopulation, if we have one. Kay Hurley will discuss this, I hope she will join the meeting and have a chance to speak. In the 51 years from 1961 through 2018, data from Mass, the Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife tells us that the number of deer killed statewide has increased by a factor of four in that time. The statewide deer herd nonetheless continued to grow during that time with most of the growth occurring in suburban eastern Massachusetts, and this is very, very important. This is an example of why Dr. Rutberg observed in his talk in Carlisle that killing deer, or actually in a book that he contributed to that was published by the Smithsonian Institute, observed that killing deer is not the same as controlling deer populations. Deer herds grow until they reach the limits of their food supply, but well-fed deer reproduce very rapidly. In suburbia, we've increased the food supply with the wrong plants in our residential landscapes, and when the deer eat them, we replace the plants. In effect, we've created a deer food conveyor belt. By so doing, what we've done is we have increased the limit on the size of the deer herd. This is why the great increase in hunting in Massachusetts in that 57-year period has failed to control the deer population. We've created the problem, and instead of getting at the cause of it by changing our behavior, we've tried and failed to put a Band-Aid on it. So if 57 years of all forms of hunting statewide has not controlled the state deer population, how can we expect bow hunting on 3% of town land to do it? At the 310 Board of Selectmen meeting, Selectmen Ascolilo said, "We don't know the number." And I believe, this was in reaction to the deer committee report at that meeting, I believe is referring to the level of deer killing in the townland hunts that would be necessary to solve the problem the board is trying to solve. But we can get good estimates of that number, actually. The deer population growth is mathematically identical to the growth of interest-bearing bank accounts. Both are exponential processes, as is virus propagation. Therefore, we can use financial tools such as an HP12C, together with a DFW estimates of the Carlisle deer herd size, and the state of Connecticut reproduction rate, which says that deer herds, well-fed, can double in two years. We can use that reproduction rate to do that calculation. And the result that you get from that, backing out the number of deer that we kill in hunts on private land, and the number of deer that die in automobile collisions, the result is that it would take a factor of 10 to a factor of 27 greater number of deer killed in the townland hunts over the average of the results of the 2018 and 2019 hunts. And that is just to stop the growth of the herd. Of the details of all of this, we have a website, I will give you the URL, the complete details of this calculation are on the website. These kinds of numbers are obviously not achievable, and if we have a real problem, stopping the herd growth is just a minimum, it only prevents the problem from getting worse. To reverse the problem, we need to actually reduce the herd size, which would mean even more deer killing than the calculation I just mentioned indicates, and that's an obvious impossibility. None of this reasoning is used to an expert like Dr. Rutberg, and it underlies the reason for his statement in the Carlisle talk last November that bow hunting on conservation land will not solve serious deer problems. I just want to address one thing, some in favor of the hunts have said that doing something is better than doing nothing. That's simply not true in many cases, and to be sensible or justifiable, the benefit has to exceed the cost, which is very difficult if there's negligible benefit or significant cost. This is almost invariably the case when your solution is very far from solving your problem. It's, a couple of examples are, is it better to throw a glass of water on a raging house fire, or if you've jumped out of an airplane and your chute doesn't open, is it better to flap your arms? Couple of examples. I'm almost finished. So let's think about what we can do. The first thing we need to do is do a real rigorous set of periodic studies to determine whether or not we really do have a forest health problem caused by deer. Kay, I thought she was going to go before me, but Kay will have a lot to say about the inadequacy of the 2016 DFW study. Multiple studies will provide the data for measuring the effectiveness of any mitigation efforts if it turns out we need them. And those metrics make the process self-correcting, we can make mid-course corrections based on those metrics, and without doing these measurements, we're just guessing. We also need to immediately institute a program to educate the town about what plants they should and should not use in their gardens and landscapes, this is very important. If studies show that we have a problem, it makes a lot more sense to stop encouraging the deer herd to grow than to fail to do that and then attempt to fix it with a method that the data and the experts say won't work. We should also establish a Board of Selectmen-level relationship with the Tufts contraception program, Dr. Rutberg's program. Their method does work, and it's on its way to becoming practical, economically practical. I'll email the slides that I was going to show, and also point it to the website that I've developed. The website presents our argument against the townline hunts in full detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. I know there are a lot of other people who want to talk about deer right now, but I also see the local emergency planning committee here who normally comes and gives their reports, and so I'm going to ask the people that are here to discuss deer to be patient with me. I'm going to ask, because I would like to let the staff that are here to report on the local emergency planning have a chance to give their report, and also so the citizens can hear that, then we will go back to the deer, and we'll listen to anybody who wants to talk about deer, before our discussion with the deer committee. So having said that, I would like to turn the meeting over to John Fisher, Chief of Police, and the Chair of our local emergency planning committee.
Samillion, Kate, a couple of quick things from our meetings in the past week. Importantly, we had the addition to our Committee of Joan Ingersoll, the new Director of Council on Agents, has been a welcome addition. But importantly, I would like to give a shout out at this Selectmen's meeting to Angela Smith, who's been standing in for Joan these past couple of months. And I think that those on LEPC could say that Angela did a phenomenal job, is just an absolute Carlisle gift, and I know that Joan has jumped right in with both feet. But I wanted to take this moment for all of us to give a big, all of us on LEPC, to give a big thumbs up on everything Angela Smith did for the emergency planning in our town, especially the emergency action, because she is, if anybody knows her, all about action. So the second thing is, I want to talk about is planning. We've moved forward, obviously the Selectmen heard about the planning that we're working on around town, and that that planning has now moved kind of into our middle-range type of events. So the first of those has been some of the moves we've made toward Town Hall things, so that Tim Goddard, Linda Fantasia facilitated the, for example, the barriers we've got for Town Hall, Linda and Tim took care of that. Other things have gotten done are some masks being ordered to get ready, so that when we do increase the accessibility of Town Hall, we can do it safely for the citizens and for the employees equally. Other medium-range Town Planning things, very excited for this caucus on the 18th. So I think we have an excellent plan, the LEPC has laid out to do a safe caucus with our town clerk, and I look forward to how that goes. And importantly, we've been spending a lot of time on the LEPC, and a lot of town employees have been spending a lot of time on work-related things in a very stressful environment. So we've spent time at the LEPC talking about mental health, both with people we work with, our citizens, as well as the people on LEPC, and the employees that the directors have for the LEPC. So our special focus the last couple of weeks, members of the Selectmen, has really been on mental health, and making sure we check on each other, check on our neighbors, and we hope that anyone here on this meeting would consider doing that. And lastly, as I do frequently, I want to thank the residents of Carlisle for doing all they do to keep people safe. Driving around Carlisle and members of the LEPC are checking on things, people are being safe for the most part in Carlisle, and I think our numbers reflect that. They aren't as good as we'd like them to be, and I'm sure you're going to hear from Linda Fantasia about that, but I think we're making, we're doing all the right things and making progress toward anything that's open being done with the eye towards safety. So thank you, Kate, for giving me this opportunity. I'll be here, obviously, to answer anybody's questions, and I would like to give, if you don't mind, Kate, the other members of the LEPC to fill in some of the holes that I might have forgotten.
Kate, you're on mute.
Sorry, I've got a dog behind me, so I keep on muting myself, so, sorry. So I'm going to go to Linda next, and then I'll do Brian, Brian, I'll do you right after Linda's, okay? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So as Chief Fisher indicated, our numbers have increased. We are at 11 confirmed and five probable cases. Five of the confirmed have recovered. So that is more than we had last week. We are still, I consider them still very good numbers, because we are right there with our sister towns, in fact, we maybe have the lowest amount of cases compared to our other similar towns, so that's good news. Carlisle residents are definitely doing what they should. And I learned today that Department of Public Health, their helpline, normally they get about 10,000 calls a year, and as of May, they were up to 20,000. So it just shows the magnitude of the problem that we're facing. They've been very good about providing us with guidelines, sometimes not quite as fast as we would like. For example, summer camps, we're still waiting on guidelines for that. But considering the number of calls and cases that they're dealing with, you know, I think we're all very satisfied. The Department of Public Health is definitely emphasizing the contact tracing, because they feel that rapid identification of close contacts, someone who has been exposed to COVID, is one of the best ways of containing spread of the virus. So again, if you get a call from someone from Mass COVID, please take the call and provide them with the information. Board of Health is meeting tonight, actually at 7:30, and Board of Health has been working with the Trails Committee and the Recreation Committee on advising for safe use of the fields and the trails, basically asking people to wear face coverings, which is the new state guideline, when you can't maintain social distancing, stay six feet apart. And most people are very good about trail etiquette and not coming too close to people. If anyone encounters a problem, please let either Chief Fisher or myself know, and we'll see what we can do about it. But we're very pleased that both of those committees and Conservation have been very willing to work with us on that. And that's pretty much it for Board of Health.
Thank you very much, Linda. Chief Soros?
Yeah, so we've been working hard to keep the community safe and to keep ourselves safe, you'll see us, you know, having the right equipment and having the right approaches to not spread the virus. We do need, as we're moving, as we said, into kind of the medium term here, we have a lot of new people, we're going to be, we need to do a lot of teamwork and a lot of training, and so you will see us, we've radically changed the way we do training, but you will see us out in small groups, doing it in such, in a safe way. If you have concerns about it, please, if you see something concerns you, give me a call, we can talk about it. We're doing our best to move forward at the same time, stay safe and protect the community.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Soros? Sorry, this is a luxury, oh, Laurie Eckler. Hi, Laurie, you're muted. Okay.
There you go. Hi. Just a quick update from the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team. I think at this point, we're servicing 21 households with groceries, pharmacy runs, transfer station runs, I feel like we add a few people every week to our list that we're helping. Sometimes it takes just one quick run to convince them that they need to add the rest of their groceries and pharmacy runs to our list. We have also delivered to almost everyone who asked face covers, reusable face covers that were sewn by the Carlisle sewists, we have a few more people to deliver to, but that was a request that had been made, and I think we're almost complete with that. I think that's all I have, and our plan is, you know, we're doing a good job matching volunteer citizens in Carlisle with their neighbors to provide the support that's been requested. So thank you to all of, if you're on this call and you're a volunteer, thank you very much.
Okay. Joan, did you want to report for the COA tonight? I don't see, go ahead.
Yes, well, Angela gave me talking points, so I totally, with the chief said about Angela, she's been amazing. And so she says that we are continuing with our medical equipment loans, information support on Medicare, not emergency, critical non-emergency rides, meals on wheels, which is right now currently down to four people, but we're still delivering their meals, we're following up on all the email and phone calls we get, and we're also reaching out to seniors, different groups of seniors who we think might be especially vulnerable, so we're calling them and talking with them about what they need and how we can help them. We're continuing with the weekly bits and bites, and our new newsletter is going to be sent to the publisher tonight. We've got classes online, the coffees, exercise classes, French, knitting, and then links to other things that people might be interested in. And then next week, we're starting up the monthly TV shows through Zoom, we're going to have updates from Chief Fisher, and Linda Fantasia, and Laurie Eckler, so that should be good. And Laurie, I talked about the masks, and we're researching, you know, what we're going to be doing down the road to continue with classes and programs when we can't really fully open or have people in the state center.
Thank you very much, Joan. And again, I want to repeat Chief Fisher's commendation of Angela Smith, she has done a yeoman's job. And thank you for stepping in at this time, this is a very difficult place to drop into, and we appreciate your willingness to just jump in cold like that, so thank you. See Christine there, here for schools? No, you're still muted.
Oh, there we go, okay. Just to report that the faculty are working on gathering up the students' things, and then they'll put together a delivery schedule, so no one's there at the same time, or few people are there at the same time. The same is true for the nurse's office with medications that are currently stored at the school. Graduation is still a hot topic, there's a meeting tomorrow night with faculty and parents, and so things are just humming along, we're doing good.
Excellent. I guess I'll just add a word here, in that at our last meeting, we talked about the Selectmen may be making some common recognitions to the graduating classes that we have here in town, since they're not getting the sort of recognition and graduation thing, we haven't talked about it yet as a board, but we did talk about it in the LEPC, saying that we thought maybe the board ought to be thinking about some of these recognitions to try to help keep spirits up. So. Tim, would you like to talk about town administration and in the period of COVID and LEPC terms?
Well, just very briefly, that as I mentioned before, we're working on a plan to open Town Hall in a responsible way that keeps our employees safe and keeps our residents safe. It will be kind of a slow roll-up, but we think that's the responsible thing to do. In the meantime, Town Hall might be close to foot traffic from the public, but you know, please feel free to reach out to any department that you need anything from a permit or information, because they're all checking their emails, checking their phone messages, if they're not working remotely, they're coming in a few days a week to catch up on things. So Town Hall, the building might be closed physically, but you know, please reach out to town departments, and I promise that you'll get a timely response to your request. I think that's really all I'd add, Kate.
Okay, thank you. All right, there are 33 participants on our Zoom here tonight, so I'm having a hard time locating people. Did I miss anybody on, if I missed anybody in LEPC, would you please raise your hand? Okay, and if there are any people in the audiences that have any question, COVID questions for LEPC? Comments? Great, thank you. So thank you very much. I'd like to also again thank all the members of the Local Emergency Planning Commission or Committee, they are town staff, they're volunteers, they meet endlessly, they come late to these meetings. I think you need to be commended too, when our Selectmen do our commendations. I'd like to thank you all for your forward planning and your help and your ideas, and this is not, this unfortunately is not the end of your task, you're going to be at this for a while, but I just again want to not forget to thank everybody as many times as we can, because this has been a lot of work, and I like that to be recognized. So thank you again. All right, I'm going to, I'm sorry I was late, I was attending the FinCom meeting and got carried away, it was very interesting. So Alan, can you tell me, did you go over the agenda with the audience yet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I don't have to do that. So the next item on the agenda is the discussion with the deer committee, and I did promise people that they could share or do some input. What I would like to request, we got letters from Jeannie and from Mike Canower, which everybody on the committee has read. We've had a presentation now from Don Allen, I believe Kay wanted to say something. What I would like to say, ask, is that if you've sent us a letter, unless there's something new you would like to add to it, we've all read the letter, and we will take that, you know, that information in consideration when we do our, have our discussions, but we would like to have some time for the deer committee to also make their presentation to us, so I'm going to try to limit the input to new information that you have not already sent us, please. Okay. So Kay? I will recognize you. Kay, you're muted.
No. Well, somebody's got, I can't control it.
You're good now.
All right, thanks very much. No, Kate, I have sent a letter, you didn't mention it when you mentioned the letters. So I don't know if you received it yet or not. It only went to Tim, but I asked him to forward it, so maybe it got lost somewhere. My input, basically, it's brief anyway, it's about the state of the understory, and what we know, what we don't know, you know, what we know is that it's a complex habitat. We know that DFW in 2016 did eight browse surveys, we know they didn't follow their own protocol, we know they covered a tiny percent of the land, we know they provided no data at all on wildflowers or any vegetation that was not browsed. They didn't show unsustainable browsing, and most importantly, they didn't give us a baseline by which we can measure any changes going forward. The other thing we know about understory is that it isn't uniform across our public land, so we don't have a town understory. We have dozens of understories in all the different chunks of land that we have. The thing that we don't know is the state of the understory in any of these little habitats. And there's a lot of things that we could do that are currently not being done to give us this baseline that I think we would need to measure any impact of just deer going forward, any impact of hunting going forward. And that would be to sort of have some kind of formal study of the state of the understory. We've got some data now from, you know, the OS and R report, Appendix D, we've got, you know, Christmas bird count data that tells us about that aspect of, you know, of the birds, since this is a complex, interrelated set of things when you start looking at the health of the forest. So we've got some data that we could use as the beginnings of some formal study. One of the other things we could do, since we have invasive plants in our understory, is possibly consider some incentives for homeowners to not host invasives on private land. You know, the invasives didn't, they got into the public land by probably birds. And if we were to clear invasives from conservation land, they'd just, they'd come up again because they're hosted on private land.
Okay, I'm going to cut you there.
All right.
I appreciated all the information, and I do remember your, I'm sorry, I do remember your remote, I had the map at the bottom with the trail marked.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah. Is there anybody else? Christina?
Yes.
Could you give us your last name and your?
Christina Lopelis, Christina Christina Lopelis, and I'll try to be brief as well.
That's okay.
My household opposes bow hunting on town land. Some of the reasons are, the hunt is recreational. Land that is paid for by Carlisle residents' taxes is essentially unavailable to the town's residents during a great season to be outdoors, and is an... and is in all sense and purposes deemed the recreational use for a few hunters, over half of which are not even Carlisle residents and don't pay town taxes. Bowhunting is not an effective means to reduce deer populations. Numerous scientific studies have shown this and is also evidenced by the 2018 and 19 harvest numbers of the pilot program. And it is questionable Carlisle even has a deer overpopulation problem. It is costing the town a lot of money in increased administrative fees, police hours, et cetera. More hunters will only increase that cost. The small hunting permit fee does not begin to cover these costs and makes the town liable should there be an accident. An insurance to cover the town for such liability only adds to the budget. Conservation Commission Charter states it's for, quote, "acquisition and management of open lands for passive recreation purposes," end quote. Deployment of lethal weapons is not passive. Sensitive ecosystems, normally protected by being deemed conservation land, are open to being compromised by hunters during scouting for stand location as deer stands are erected and dismantled, as hunters walk to and from their stands, sometimes multiple times a day, by tracking injured deer and by removing carcasses. Bottom line, Carlisle is a suburb. Hunting is in conflict with too many suburban uses of the land: jogging, biking, bird watching, dog walking, horseback riding, and of course, the close proximity of people's homes surrounding the parcels. I would also like to remind you that the opposition is for hunting on town-owned lands. The vast majority of deer taken in Carlisle is on private land anyway. Again, hunting and passive recreational use do not mix. And bowhunting is inhumane. Injuring a deer and waiting for hours or days for it to bleed out is animal cruelty. Even worse, nationally on average, 50% of deer hunted by archery are not even claimed by the hunters. Wasting and even more unnecessary torture. So, please, there is no harm in admitting that this is and has been a recreational hunt and that the results and costs of the pilot program do not warrant continuing the hunt, let alone expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Kay? Can I just say one thing as a suggestion? Not even about the deer hunt, but I found out there was a little problem. When... Normally, when we meet live, we can have papers and read the papers. And that's what I was trying to do, because I just sent this email to you like 10 minutes before the meeting started. And I wanted to be able to just read from it and to explain. And there were a lot of things. And then, like, the mosquito can hear it and stuff like that. But there's no way that I could see giving you paper input other than emailing it to you. But I didn't want it to be translated as "I'm writing you a letter in lieu of speaking for public input." So...
See if there's anybody else, because I know I read it. And I think there's some other people that may want to have some input as well. So, I might be able to circle back to you, but I need to keep on moving along. So, I see Robert Zog. Could recognize him right now? Robert, you just a minute. We have to unmute you. Okay, try it again.
I am muted now?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, Bob Zog in North Road. And I do want to talk about the deer hunt, but from a very different perspective than what you've been hearing. Now, our master plan fall survey told us that the reason that people live in Carlisle is they value our open space and natural resources. But our open spaces are under serious threat from overbrowsing. Now, I know this is disputed by some, but we've heard from a lot of knowledgeable residents that have confirmed this threat. And if you don't believe them, you really just have to look at the loss of hardwood saplings and the lack of replacement of the older trees as they die off. And we can tell it's deer browse because we just have to look out our windows and look at the deer eating this. I mean, I've observed this in my own property, and it's really quite alarming. Now, Don Allen in his report has estimated that we would need to harvest something like 100 to 300 deer annually to keep the herd in check. Now, there certainly, that includes both the private and public hunt, okay? Now, certainly, there is uncertainties in the numbers, but let's see, you know, what we could do to get to something like 100 deer. And there's really three things that I think would do it. If we had the public land hunt, if we allowed those hunters to hunt the full Massachusetts season, and we doubled the number of hunters, and then on the private land, we facilitated increasing the number of private land hunters so that we double that number, that would likely get us close to the 100. And the trick here is that there's just no good alternatives. The contraceptive thing may pan out, but it's simply not available yet, and we can't wait for it. Dr. Rettberg has been working on this since 1983, and it is not available yet. You know, we could bring in the professional sharpshooters, but that is really a last resort, and I hope it doesn't come to that. Yes, it's a great idea to stop feeding the deer, but I really don't think that's going to be enough to curb the size of the deer population. And I know legal counsel will probably caution you about facilitating hunting on private land and trying to connect hunters with landowners. But it's really not their decision, it's yours. And the real question is, is saving our woodlands worth the legal risk? And also, I'd like to suggest we don't put to full cost on the hunters. We won't... We may not get enough hunters if we do that. Let's give the deer committee the modest resources they need. Let's grant their request for more hunters, and let's extend the season. And let's set a process up so we can connect property owners with deer hunters. The status quo we've got right now just isn't enough. Thank you very much.
Kate, you're muted.
Doug was barking again. I think I'm going to move on to the deer committee and ask Don Luthen to cock to present for the deer committee.
Kate, before we go there, I'm wondering if I can provide public input unrelated to deer?
Yes, unrelated to the deer, sure.
Sure. So, actually, before the whole virus started, I was working with you guys on the electric vehicle chargers. And so, by the way, this is Jonathan DeCock, Oak Knoll Road. You're representing the Energy Task Force. So, there's been some interesting developments that I sent you a letter about, which is, as you guys recall, we were trying to work on getting a connection across Church Street. And we had a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to try for overhead wires and then for underground wires. It turns out Eversource would prefer not to make a connection that way and would prefer to integrate with Amaresco. And the net effect of this is Amaresco can't do it in a timely manner in order for us to use the Green Communities grant. However, Amaresco is willing to give the town three electric vehicle chargers instead of the one that we would have got through Green Communities. And so, working with Amaresco and Eversource, the Energy Task Force has actually come up with a deal where three electric vehicle chargers will be installed in the school parking lot. And we've run this through the school committee, and they gave us their enthusiastic support for doing this. And also recently, we've run it through the planning board, who's also given us their enthusiastic support. And so, I'm going to eventually ask for the Board of Selectmen to also give us their support in this. We're waiting for final details between Amaresco and Eversource to be worked out. And then, I think you guys have to accept the gift of about $30,000 worth of electric vehicle charging equipment. So, anyways, I just thought I'd let you know that.
Thank you. Procrastination pays off from time to time, right? Okay. Thank you. So, deer report, please.
Okay. So, first, Kate, I set it up so that the deer committee could have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen so we can deliberate and, if necessary, vote. Would you like me to call that to order now so that we can have that joint meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll call the Deer Control Committee to order. I believe I have a quorum with Barney, Alex, and Dan. And so, given that, let's get started. I do need someone to take some notes for us. I don't know if Jen's notes from the Board of Selectmen will be sufficient.
We are recording this meeting, so you can also take them off the recording if you want.
Okay, that'll be fine then. Okay. So, first, Kate, let me say that with the virus, the health risks, the associated lockdowns, the necessary social distancing, we all have many more important things to do right now. So, I'm grateful that the Select Board is willing to discuss this with us today because despite all of the current situation, we have a lot of pre-work to do to get started on implementing what you previously asked this committee to do. We're happy to work out the specifics, but we really need to understand and hear from you, the Board of Selectmen, that you want us to implement this charge that you gave the committee about, you know, two years ago. And if that's the case, then in order to really have an impact on reducing the deer overpopulation, we have come up with a set of proposals for how we proceed with next year's hunt that we would like your high-level guidance on. And so, I'd like to know, am I correct in understanding that you want the deer committee to implement the original charge of reducing the deer overpopulation in town for the next year? And I'm going to turn it over to Barney to, or you and Barney, to discuss this now.
First of all, before I let Barney talk, I would like to thank the deer committee because I know how much time and effort you guys have been putting into it. I have to say, already, the last time that we met, I was impressed with your report and the clarity of it. And I do want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank you for the question you just asked because I think indeed, that is where we are. I don't want... I would not like to see you guys do any more work if, at the end, this board doesn't want to support you. So, I think that's a very salient question and that we need to have a chance to discuss... The board needs to have a chance to discuss with you and among themselves to decide whether it merits your caring forward. So, with that, I'll turn it to Barney.
I don't... I want to just support Jonathan and the whole deer committee, for which I'm the liaison from the Board of Selectmen. And I have my opinion about the hunt going forward. But I think it really would be sort of appropriate for the other members of the board to say what their thinking is around going ahead. And then, I'm happy to chime in.
Okay. So, I'm going to call on the members of the board who want to either make a statement or ask questions or have comments.
All right, I'll go first. Go ahead, Luke, if you want.
No, you can go. You can go first.
Well, again, I have not... I mean, we had, we got several letters in yesterday and today, some of which I haven't even seen yet. But, and I think I'm going to reserve my judgment until I see those. I think the arguments on both sides are, have some validity. And certainly no question that we don't have a lot of data from which to make this decision in terms of its effect on the understory. I mean, that seems obvious at this point. But again, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do something. But I want to look at those data and try to make my judgment at least on the facts that are available to us. And I simply haven't had the opportunity to do that. I haven't seen Don Allen's report. I haven't seen Jeannie's letter. And so, I'd like to see that before I decide which way I want to lean on this.
Okay. Luke?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just, I'm actually reading the current charge again. Yeah, it's kind of a... Not really the best charge. So, yeah, so my point, the last time, which I guess was March 10th, Jesus, was that our last in-person meeting? You know, that Mr. Allen brought up. Yeah, I still kind of sit in that same camp in terms of, you know, we need to collect more data. You know, I do agree with the assessment that, yeah, you know, overbrowsing, I think, could be an issue. You know, just going out into our yards and whatnot. You know, as Bob pointed out, you know, we see, I think everybody sees deer, right? But the thing is, at the end of the day, you know, we set this committee up really to, you know, implement a program or to start a program, right? Gather information, collect data, and move forward in that respect. And I think over the past couple of years, we just haven't really collected any data. It's really just been, you know, we've gotten 10 deer in the first year, 6 deer in the second year. And that really hasn't said anything. It really hasn't shown much. I don't think 16 deer make an impact, you know, especially, some of those are bucks, right? So, anyway, you know, my whole thing is, you know, I... I don't want to say we shouldn't do this, but, you know, until there's a... You know, I think until we actually have a firm footing of what we actually want to get out of this, you know, until we collect some data, until we actually, you know, set up some of these browsing studies, you know, then maybe we should postpone it until we actually know what we want to get out of this, right? I mean, obviously, we want to reduce the grazing of the understory, right? And, you know, and I think, you know, studies have shown that, yeah, you really have to, as Mr. Allen pointed out, you really have to kind of decimate the population in order to have any impact on it. And, you know, and the 16 deer aren't, you know. And to his point earlier, I was really, I don't know what the overall number we bag in town is. It'd be nice to have, you know, more of the data from private lands. But, you know, I don't know how you go about collecting that information. But, that's really kind of where I stand is that, you know, I really want more information to be, more data. I want more information to be collected. And, you know, I know there are different ideas and plans in place to collect that. You know, but there is probably, these surveys cost money, and there is going to be a cost to the town. And, you know, in a time when we're trying to save money, do we want to spend money? But also, I have no idea what these things even cost, right? You know, is it something that can come out of the CONSCOM budget? Is it something that we can pay for with the licensing fees? I don't know. So, that's really where I am. I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to hunting. I'm not opposed to hunting on town lands. I just, you know, the... And this is why I read the charge again. The whole purpose was that, you know, we would do something to reduce the destruction of the understory. And at the end of the day, I don't think we've shown one way or the other that this is doing. So, unless we move forward with a way that we can show that, I don't really see it as more than, as one individual pointed out, a recreational hunt. And if that's what we want to have, then that's what we should call it, right? But, yeah, and then we vote on it that way, and we let the town decide that way. But, anyway, sorry, kind of ranted a bit, but...
You're an exterior thinker, that's all.
Yeah. Verbal diarrhea, I think some people have.
No, no. I didn't say that. Nathan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, I did read the letters that came across. Maybe there were more that came since the last batch, but I did read those letters. You know, I am not opposed to hunting. I've been supportive of this all along. What I'm a little bit concerned about is the fact that, you know, this kind of all started with, you know, discussions with CONSCOM about, you know, deer hunting and the understory. And I agree with what Luke was just saying is that we're missing, you know, we're missing some of the data. The one... So, I guess, you know, I guess my concern is that, you know, I feel like the Board of Selectmen's role was really, should we be allowing deer hunting on town property? And what would the policies and the procedures and the processes be about around that? And I think that the, you know, the deer... And I think that the, you know, the Deer Committee has done a terrific job in putting all of that together. I think what I would like to go back and round out more is CONSCOM's role and how we know whether or not what we're doing is working. And, you know, this is mostly CONSCOM property, and if we're trying to solve problems, you know, conservation problems, I think, you know, having their involvement in this and informing us of the science of it would be critical. You know, again, I think our role is by, you know, by town policy, by town mandate is, you know, the Board of Selectmen decides when there can be deer hunting or not. And I think that we've done that, and the Deer Committee has done a really good job at that. I think the science part is what we're talking about here and the studies. I think there needs to be more behind that before I would feel comfortable saying, yeah, let's just keep plowing forward.
I will add, I am also not anti-hunting. I have a couple hunters in the family, I grew up hunting, but I totally agree, I agree with you, Nathan, and with you, Luke, the science is missing here. On the other hand, I don't believe that it is such a horrible, you know, imposition on the town. I mean, if it is recreational hunting, if we just decide it's recreational hunting and not worry about the science, let's say, town lands are for all kinds of recreation. It's not, you know, and I don't, so to have one, to ban one kind of recreation, we, you know, a lot of people don't like dogs, and so, you know, do we want to then say, well, you can't have a dog on the town land because somebody might not like dogs? Or you can only have dogs, you know, certain times a day? So I guess I kind of class the bow hunting and the kind of like having a dog in the town that's going to, I don't consider bow hunting to be a dangerous activity, and I don't consider that it is mutually exclusive with passive recreation on the trails for other people. Having said that, we're in a terrible time financially, I'm not interested in providing recreation at a cost to our town at this point, and I'm not sure about the science and how we can get that without also incurring costs. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't either, A, declare it just recreational hunting and make a decision about that, or postpone it, or, you know, for a year or two, or whatever we need for gathering the data about browsing.
So Kate, I don't disagree with you at all. You know, I think that, you know, we could be at a point where, you know, recreational hunting is what we want to allow. I don't think necessarily we should have that discussion tonight because it's a fairly significant shift.
We should, I'm just saying, yeah.
No, no, I'm just, but, you know, but so, you know, I guess I would just propose that, you know, maybe that is on the table for some future meeting, but, you know, that, you know, our discussion, you know, we should be deciding, are we, you know, I would hate to disband it and to stop and to lose everything that we've done, but maybe we just say, let's postpone this, let's postpone it for the reasons that have been put forward right now and until we can get more input from CONSCOM and maybe involvement from CONSCOM. And, you know, maybe at some future meeting, you know, hopefully when we can meet in person and people can be there in person, you know, we could, we could have the full-on discussion as to whether or not recreational hunting is allowed on town-owned property.
And that would be.
That's a completely different thing that we wouldn't want to throw into tonight's meeting.
No, and it would be, in my opinion, it should be a dedicated meeting, we have absolutely nothing else on our agenda, that's all we talk about, and anybody who wants to come from, comes and has a full forum, we have a full forum around it.
Yeah.
So, but, but what I don't also want, I don't want to tell the Deer Committee, keep on working, work harder, work more, and then we end up not supporting, you know, anything that they do. So I think we need to be really careful about how we use our volunteers and what we ask them to do if we're not really, don't have our hearts in it.
I'd like to say that, you know, Jonathan has got a number of ideas to offer that have been developed by the Deer Committee that address some of the points people have raised. One is around the cost, and another is around getting some more data from the hunters themselves. But I guess I'm just putting on the table the question of whether we want to go ahead and hear the rest of Jonathan's presentation, and then either make a recommendation at the end of that about how the board wants to proceed in terms of support for going forward, or that we hear the rest of what Jonathan has to say, and then give people a chance to think it over, and next, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we could reach a conclusion.
I'm going to poll the board, what would you like to do? Alan, I'll start with you.
Well, again, to me, the key question is, what is the size of the calling that has to be done? I mean, we're never going to, we're never going to get the data on the understory browsing. I mean, we're not, that's a very expensive project, we've got a lot of different lands, it's going to be different everywhere you go. I mean, I don't think that that's, any kind of a systematic study is going to take years, and we're not, we're not prepared to do that. On the other hand, and we know that one of the recommendations of the Deer Committee is to expand both the lengths and the number of people involved in the hunt. The question is, will that result in a sufficiently larger number of deer kills to make any kind of an effect on the understory? I've seen no data, no indication that that, in fact, would happen. So my own feeling is that until we get some better data that indicates this will be an effective hunt and do what we originally charged to have done, that is to reduce the browsing of the understory by the deer population, that we should postpone it.
I'm going to let Jonathan, unless board, any other of the board members want to say something.
I guess I would just say, you know, if Jonathan's going to present, you know, I struggle a little bit with hearing things at the meeting, you know, we don't, we don't have anything that we've been able to review ahead of time or that people have been able to see ahead of time. So I would say, you know, if Jonathan's going to present, that's great, but that you don't ask us to make any decisions after that presentation.
That's fine, that's fine. I think that's how, I'm, yeah, I guess we're going to have to leave it like that. Yeah. Luke, did you want to add anything to that?
No, you know, I mean, I guess, it seems like three of us are fairly strong in supporting postponing. I think you are leaning towards postponing. I definitely think we should let Jonathan present. You know, I mean, I think if we were to sway the other way, then maybe we consider postponing, but, or postponing that, postponing the hunt, postponing the vote. But I just, you know, I mean, I think if, you know, unless he comes up with some, you know, new information that I think would sway the board, I think we could still, you know, make a decision tonight, you know, because obviously, we've got a bunch of people here tonight for this, and, you know, if we have to bring everybody back out just to vote, that's another thing. But, you know, I mean, if he did prepare something, I think we should, we should definitely.
Well, it was never a question whether we were going to hear Jonathan or not, it was a question of whether we would take a vote one way or another. Let's listen to Jonathan, and then we can revisit this question, it might clarify things. So, sorry, Jonathan, take it away, Jonathan.
Okay, so, before I actually launch into my presentation, and by the way, Nathan, this is derived from the slides that I sent you on the March 10th meeting, so it has, you know, gotten to you guys in writing. But before I go there, let me, let me just say, the state and various conservation organizations consider this to be a regional problem, right? So the question is, do we consider Carlisle to be exceptional relative to the region, and we need to get our own unique data for Carlisle or even individual plots within Carlisle? Or is the data from the region, the Sudbury Valley, adequate? And so I think that's one thing that you guys would need to consider, because if we're looking at this regionally, then we have a lot of regional resources we can tap to get better data and to look at better data. So that's, that's one thing that I think you should consider. Secondly, I'd just like to point out that the boards and the committees and the commissions that report to you have been unanimous in their support of this program. The Conservation Commission made a very strong statement at last town meeting, as did Trails. The Land Stewardship Committee, I think you received their letter, they made a very strong statement in support of this. I think you have a lot of input from the other boards and committees in town available to you that should be considered. Those boards and committees don't necessarily want to show up at every single meeting and reaffirm their commitment to doing this, but I think if we were to cancel it, I think we should at least ask them first, if that makes sense. So I think, you know, that's something that you guys can think about, whether you want to receive their input, because right now, they haven't had anybody ask them, right? So, so something to consider there, okay? So, so anyways, the, let me, let me launch into the various specifics of what we were thinking about doing, and I'm going to run through them one at a time, I think, and hear from you guys what you think of the ideas. Because we can, you know, we can mix and match, you know, remove some, you know, add some, whatever. But the first is, yeah, we were disappointed with, you know, the number of deer that are taken, right? I think Don Allen's estimate of how many deer need to be taken is not consistent with, you know, what Mass Wildlife says is the, you know, the population increase rate, but, you know, be that as it may, we need to take more deer to have a significant impact. And we've run a very small pilot program for two years, and so what we thought is, what can we do to be more effective? And so I've asked the Deer Committee members to brainstorm for the past few months on this, and these, this is the set of ideas that we believe are going to be useful. So, the first is, we were concerned about the northwest side of Carlisle, right? We did not have any hunting happening there. And so we looked at the map and saw that there is the Hart and Swanson land, which is largely untouched, there's very few trails through there, it's basically a big swamp. Big swamps are places that deer like to hang out, and so there's a potential for significant deer there. We have anecdotal information from people that hunt private land around that area saying that there are a lot of deer in that vicinity. So we thought we would add the Hart and Swanson land as one of the places that we could hunt. It would probably not be a significant number of hunters, somewhere between two and five would probably be the right number, because you can't actually put up a tree stand in the swamp, you have to have a tree, and the swamp there has no trees. So it's the edges of the swamp that would end up being hunted. So that's one. We did not expect very much pushback from that. The, one of the hunters that lives in town would actually end up walking in, so he's a neighbor of this property. On the other side of the property, the hunters would need to use the Hanover Hill Trail, and that trail actually runs through the back of Todd's property, and so he's on the Deer Committee, and so both of those would be, you know, the most likely people that would push back, and they're both in support of the program. So we thought that might be a good one to add. The second is the DPW land, and we thought about the DPW land because it's so closely connected to Conan, and again, it doesn't have many trails through it, and so it's, and it's got a large pond, so it's good deer habitat. And so we thought we could add more hunters to essentially the combined DPW and Conan lands. And again, we did not expect much pushback because the butters to, to the DPW land that would be anywhere near where the hunting was occurring are actually Barney and Jeff and Margie. And so we've talked with Barney, of course, and we've talked with Jeff and Margie, and they would both support the program to add the DPW land. And so we thought that would make sense, we could add another, essentially, one or two hunters on the DPW land that way. So what do you guys think about adding lands? Those are the two primary potential lands that we would add. Or Kate, do you want me to go through it like this and ask these questions?
No, let's answer the questions one by one, I think, maybe. I have one question, would you, if you add that land, would you consider taking out other lands that you currently have?
Well, that's my next point, actually, is we could consider, but I have that as a separate bullet item.
Okay, sorry. So maybe we have to let you ask all your questions first, and then we can go back. All right. This is an iterative process, you know, we have to figure it out as we're going. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll continue then. So, so the other question, and then is Greeno, right? And so if we were to drop a property, we would probably drop Greeno. And the reason is that we have had no success getting any deer on Greeno in the last two years. And this is, this is odd, because I live near there, and there are plenty of deer there, but we thought maybe we need to do something else. And so, so we talked about it in the Deer Committee, and it was actually, the majority of the Deer Committee thought that it would be better to change what we're doing on Greeno rather than abandon Greeno. And so we thought it would make sense to go up to either like six or eight hunters and revisit the parking question and see where we could add additional parking for the hunters, and also look at the actual maps, because according to the regulations, there are actually other areas of the property that are huntable, which we had not drawn onto the maps. And the reason that's important is, the areas that we had drawn onto the maps are largely far from the access points, and so anyone hunting in there would have a good half-mile hike to get to their hunting location, and that's going to cause the hunters to hunt there less often. And so there are other places that are closer to the roads, parking areas, et cetera, that would be available for hunting if we took a closer look at that map. And so we thought it would make sense for us to continue hunting Greeno one more year, making some changes, and seeing if that produces any, any different results. Okay, so continuing on, so for a while, we were considering adding the Mannis land, but the Mannis land has a very difficult problem with access. Essentially, we'd have to have access across private property in order to get to the portion that's huntable. And so at this time, we're probably going to end up saying not going forward with that, it's also a very small land, we only have one or maybe two hunters on it. So that's probably not on the table right now. So the next one is increasing the season length. So last year, what we noted was there was an abrupt change with the way that the deer were roaming the woods between when our season ended and the Massachusetts shotgun season. And that was caused by, if you remember, that was the only snowfall that we got. And so we got dumped about two feet of snow right at that point, and before then, the deer were largely only moving around at night, and after that, the deer started doing what they normally do in the fall and move around in the dawn and dusk and whatnot as well. And so hunting was much, much more successful immediately after our hunting season ended, which is one of the reasons why we got a lower count than we should have, is that. And so we thought that it would make sense for us to go ahead and extend the season to cover the entire Massachusetts season rather than only a portion of it. We would still not allow any firearms, it would just be bow hunting, but, but it would make sense for us to allow bow hunting through that entire time, which is legal according to the state. So that was the next one. And then, one of the interesting things that's been deployed by a number of towns, and Weston is a good example of this, is there are many people who support the program, and if they support the program and happen to be butters of the town land that's being hunted, the official Massachusetts rules say that there's a 500-foot setback from any occupied dwelling. And if you think about 500 feet, that's nearly a tenth of a mile, right? It's a really long way. And the effective range of a bow is only about 70. And the effective range of a bow is only about 75 feet. And so there's quite a, you know, quite a discrepancy there. And even though they're on town land, uh, they're not allowed to hunt within 500 foot of someone's house. And so other towns, uh, including Weston have been very successful in getting a number of the abutters to the town land to work with individual hunters and reduce that setback so that the hunters have more available land to hunt. And, uh, and that's really what, what, what limits our ability to, to put more hunters on the land. Um, other than adding, you know, adding additional lands is you don't want to have the hunters too close together. Um, and so a place like Davis Corridor is very narrow. Once you add the, you know, the tenth of a mile setback. Uh, once you have a few people on the Davis Corridor say, yeah, you can hunt within 500 feet of my house, then, uh, then you have quite a bit more land that's available to hunting. And so that's another way to increase the land. It would be entirely voluntary and it does need to be done um, on a per homeowner, per hunter basis. So the deer committee would just, uh, you know, act as you know, connection points of saying, you know, this hunter would like to hunt in that area. You're a landowner that would like to do it, you know, you guys now sign off on this is okay. Um, so that would be another thing that we could do. And then, uh, the next was increasing the number of hunters. Uh, so if we add more land, um, we can add more hunters. And so adding Hart Swanson, DPW, um, adding more people to Greeno, um, and running essentially with what is kind of a standard across, uh, across the uh, the conservation lands that are doing this is about 10 acres per hunter, 10 acres of huntable land per hunter is about the right density to send the hunters in. We could go to, we believe up to 34 hunters. Um, and so it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of between 25 and 34, depending on, for example, how many, how many people give us, uh, you know, give people the right to hunt within 500 feet of their house. Um, so that's, that's that. Uh, and then the last one was, um, we had noted that many of the hunters are not there at the same time. Uh, the hunters often have more than one, uh, location that they hunt. In Carlisle's town land is only one of them. So they're hunting elsewhere. Also, many of them have day jobs, um, and so they're not hunting, uh, you know, during the day. And so we don't have full coverage. And so one thing that we had thought of was is there an effective means for us to do essentially some kind of time sharing? Where we would set it up so that two hunters would essentially share the same 10 acres, right? And so they would just agree not to be there at the same time. Or they would share the same parcel and agree that they would not be there at the same time. And then the question was if we did a time sharing mechanism, how would we go about implementing it, right? And so those are the kind of specifics that we would need to work out if we tried to come up with a time sharing mechanism. But, you know, honestly, the, the hunters are often there, you know, just a few percent of the time. And so it would not, you know, be something where they would be tripping over each other. Um, we could easily, I think, come up with a way to do time sharing if we needed to. But again, we'd only do the time sharing if we found that we were essentially violating the 10 acres per hunter uh, concept. So, so those were the set of ideas that we thought about for making the hunt more effective. And to give you a rough approximation, we, we figured that by doing this, we would change the number of deer taken by, you know, somewhere like probably increasing it by two X, maybe three X somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, you know, we'd get probably closer to 20 deer, I think, uh, would be a rough estimate. Uh, so, uh, so that's something to think about with these kinds of changes. So that's the set. Do you guys want to talk about them now or how would you like to proceed?
Jonathan, is, are there, are there any data which indicate what the size of the kill would need to be to be effective?
So I can estimate that for you, um, you know, just on, on, you know, kind of raw numbers. Um, so Mass Wildlife would like us to be in the range of 12 to 18 deer per square mile. They're currently estimating that regionally, we're in the range of like 30 to 50 deer per square mile. So even if we're at the low end of that range of 30 deer per square mile, we have 15 square miles of town. So we've got about 450 deer in town. If we, uh, if we want to get down to 18, that's a reduction of 12 deer per square mile across the 15 square miles is, is 180 deer that would need to be removed over some number of years, right? So Mass Wildlife also estimates that if there is no hunting whatsoever in town, then, uh, then you, the, the deer population will grow between four and 10% per year. So if we average that to the deer population is growing at 7% per year. Um, and we figure we have about 450, that's like 32 deer somewhere along there, um, to keep the numbers from actually growing. So you can look at, you know, some, essentially we, we need to take 32 to keep it from growing and we need to reduce the total size over some number of years by 180. Um, and so it would actually not be too bad if we, if, if on public land plus private land, we were to get to say 50 deer, which is what we had on 2018, we got 49. Um, we're actually making some inroads into it, right? It would take, you know, 10, 20 years to get there. But it wouldn't be something where, you know, it would be horrendous. I think.
Thank you.
Those are just rough numbers, kind of back of the envelope calculations for you.
Yep. I appreciate that.
Those, with those numbers with, you know, even, even the deer committee, let alone with Mass Wildlife.
I understand.
Um, but that's, you know, a rough approximation.
Thank you. That helps.
Are we just guessing at how many deer are taken on private property?
No, that information is actually provided by Mass Wildlife. Um, every deer that's taken anywhere in the state of Massachusetts has to be registered. Um, and by registering it, uh, it's, it's tagged with exactly what town it was taken in. Um, they're not more specific than that. So they don't tell you what property in the town it was taken in. Um, and so we know that, for example, last year we took six deer because we keep track of what's taken on the town land. And there were a total of 36, so we know there were 30 taken on private land. And by the way, private land does include the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, service land at Great Meadows. And they don't keep track specifically of where the deer, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife doesn't keep track of it. Um, but they have a rough estimate that, uh, in their Bill Ricker, um, Bedford and Carlisle zone, that 20 deer are removed from that section every year.
Uh, I just think it's, if we're talking about 20 deer on Carlisle land, it just seems like a lot of resources and it's not going to put a dent in anything. I'm just against the hunting on the Carlisle property.
Uh, Jonathan, um, I love- I'm sorry, I have not opened the meeting to-
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate. Okay.
To the audience. Um, I think unless there are other questions, um, or comments from the board, it is 8:30 and we still have other things that we have to do on our agenda. Um, we can put this on another agenda. Uh, and for, and in the meantime, anybody who does have comments can always mail us before the meeting. We're always happy to get letters and comments and we read them before the meeting, especially if they're not two minutes before the meeting.
Is there going to be vote tonight on this?
There is not going to be a vote tonight.
So Kate, if there's one more thing that I can add then before you move on to the next topic, um, let me just talk about the finances. Um, so, uh, so with 18 hunters, we bring in $540. If we were to increase to 34 hunters, it would be bringing in about a thousand and $20 at the $30 rate. Um, and, uh, so we're somewhere in that is what our revenue is. Uh, the deer committee has met to figure out how we can avoid using any of the administrative assistance time. Um, and so we believe that we can do all of our work with volunteer time by improving the regulations so that it can be done more efficiently. Um, and the net effect is that the total expenses for us are about $150 for signs. And we pay a stipend to the deer agent of $300. So we believe that in the 2021, we will actually return a net profit to the town of between $100 and $500. Um, so if you're worried about finances relative to the virus, I don't think we need to worry about that relative to the deer hunt. It's not going to cost the town any money.
Well, with all due respect, we've heard that from other boards before. And, and it doesn't always fly. Um, so I, I just, you know, just a couple of quick comments. Uh, this is an awful lot of change. Um, are we going to change lands? Yes, maybe. Are we going to drop some lands? Yes, no, maybe. We need to ask abutters if we can use their lands in order to reduce the setbacks. Um, you know, I, I, it just, it, I don't know, I just, we just, you know, this isn't just on the deer committee. This is on deer committee, board of selectmen and conscom. We just don't seem to have our act together on this and, and you know, I mean, if it's always going to be a moving target, why, why don't we just suspend it for a year, figure it out? Exactly how we want to do this. We can do the legwork and talk to some of the abutters. You know, we can, you know, we can figure out, because another thing with fees too, you know, if people end up sharing land, right? Are they going to want to, you know, pay the hundred dollar, whatever fee it is, or are they going to say, well, I'm splitting this land with somebody else and my time's shortened, I, I don't want to pay the full fee. Um, you know, these are all things that I, you know, I think they're questions that can be answered. Um, but it's just, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work and, and, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, you know, who, who takes the lead on it? Is it deer committee? Is it conscom? Um, is it board of selectmen? I, I don't know. But, you know, maybe with a joint effort, we could figure a lot of this stuff out. Um, you know, and then the idea of just, you know, adding lands and adding hunters, right? I mean, that, that should hopefully increase the, the kill. Um, but, you know, when it was initially sold to the town, it was a certain number of lands, a certain number of hunters. Um, you know, so we, there definitely has to be more public input if we're going to increase that. So I just, I, I just think there's a lot of, there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered and it seems like we're just kind of spinning our wheels here. And, um, you know, I, it's not fair to the deer committee. It's not fair to conscom. It's not fair to us. Um, to, you know, to continue asking people to work on this if, if there isn't a goal and a purpose. Um, you know, if, if we, I, I, and I don't think we could answer all these questions. When does the hunt start? October? Um, I mean, maybe we could, but I, I don't know. I just, I think, you know, I'm, I'm going to stick with that. If we suspend it for a year, we collect some information, gather some, some data, see what these surveys actually cost, these browse surveys actually cost, what it could tell us. Um, you know, really gather some good information from neighboring towns. Um, you know, I, I just think that would be better. So, um, anyway, that's just my two cents.
I, I, I do want to address just a couple of things. One is, um, you know, the permit is $30. That's what it is. And that's what we're proposing where it would stay. So I think we need to, you know, be sure we're you know, saying, saying what's, you know, being accurate with what we're saying. Um, and the second is, you know, having served on the deer committee for the last almost a year now, I guess, um, you know, I, I am absolutely positive that, um, you know, what we say will do, will do because it's clearly clear from all the time and effort that people have put into it. Um, and, uh, you know, I do think it is very important to have, uh, conscom and the Land Stewardship Committee um, involved in working together with us on this. But I, I, I just want to reiterate the point that Jonathan made, which I think we, you know, we need to appreciate that the boards in town that have much greater knowledge than I do about, uh, the land, the, the land in Carlisle, the conservation land um, and the issues around our, um, understory are all recommending that we take this approach to try and reduce the deer population. Um, and I don't believe that uh, have, from, from what I have learned, I think the studies that you're talking about, um, you know, a browse survey is one that we could choose to spend the money to have it done in Carlisle. Uh, but I think it's a cost that we are not going to want to bear, particularly over this next year. And I believe that, um, we have information from the region that supports, uh, the science, um, that there is real damage being done to the understory. So, you know, the, the thing that's a little, um, oh, it, it's almost like the, the, the town meeting dynamic, you know, how, and again, I appreciate all the folks that are on the, the Zoom call tonight and who have very strong feelings about not, you know, wanting to have a, a bow hunt on town owned land. But I, I do think there are many others that, um, think it's a, it's a reasonable thing to do. Uh, and that we, we just a year ago, well, a little bit less than a year ago, um, you know, there was a resounding vote to have the board of selectmen be the body that makes this decision. So I, I would just encourage us as a board to be sure we're looking at all the information, uh, and, and all the, the data that we do have. Um, and, uh, include that along with considering the opinions that we're hearing from different individuals or the letters that are written, which again, I can, I really support community input and I think that's important. But I think given that it's the board's responsibility at this point to make this decision, um, we should really be taking a careful look at the science that we already have, that we already know about.
I guess, you know, not, not, not to repeat myself, but, you know, I mean, I, I feel like, um, you know, you, you know, Barney, you're right. This, this was a recommendation, um, from the Land Stewardship, from conscom, I think. Um, I'm not sure if Board of Health, um, provided any input. I think they did not. But, um, I guess what I would, what I would like to do is just hear from them about what these, about these changes. And, you know, uh, you know, I, I don't feel like, um, uh, I'm positioned to be the person who is making decisions based, uh, uh, on the science of it and on the impact of our conservation land. Um, you know, we, we did take action based upon the recommendation of the, of conscom and creating this committee. Um, I would like to hear from them, um, what they think about these changes, um, before we do anything.
Alex Pear? I'm, yeah. Uh, Alex-
Muted.
You're muted. Um, Tim, can you unmute Alex or Alex, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Yeah.
Now we can.
I'm the conscom liaison to the deer committee and um, I, I just want to say a few things. One is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the absence of scientific evidence with respect to, you know, the Carlisle lands and specifically the, you know, the parcels that have been hunted. And I think it's the conscom's view that some people have called it the regional data. I would use the term probably generic data is more than sufficient to support um, you know, hunting deer in, in Carlisle. So I, I think that's the first point. The second point is uh, from the conscom's perspective, this is like an unclaimed baby now, but from the conscom's perspective, um, conscom, at, at least since I've been involved, uh, taken the view that this is really the selectmen's program, um, which the conscom supports. But having said that, uh, we don't, the conscom doesn't believe that its budget is sufficient to support, um, you know, the specific, almost surgical studies that people are suggesting need to be done uh, to support the project. And in fact, we don't even think that our budget supports the administrative time for the program. Uh, Jonathan in particular, and I think Dan has spent a lot of time in thinking about how to restructure the program so that it doesn't require, um, you know, the use of- you know, the use of, of the Conservation Commission's administrative staff to any significant degree. And as Barney said, I think this committee has demonstrated that it can do what it says it will do. And so I don't think cost is an issue unless you want to undertake these very specific studies, which I don't think CONSCOM thinks is necessary. You know, having said that, it, it would not be a bad idea if CONSCOM and the Selectmen met to discuss it further. But I do think we have a limited amount of time, especially in the current circumstances, to, you know, put the program in place for this year if we're going to proceed. So, you know, in fairness, and especially to all the work that's been done on the program, delaying the decision into the next month or two may in fact be the equivalent of saying, well, we're not going to have it this year.
It is eight forty. I'd like to have the sense of the board, what they would like to do. Is there any further discussion on this? Is there anybody wanted to make a motion? Hearing none, I will put it on a, I guess, next week's agenda for final decision.
Yeah, what if, what do you think of the idea of inviting CONSCOM to be part of a conversation next week?
CONSCOM and trustees, right?
Yep.
Nathan, I see you unmuting, so I'm assuming you're...
I, I think, I think, you know, I, I would need to vote against moving forward. You know, I would, I would need to vote to postpone it, or, you know, for this coming year if we did not have a conversation with CONSCOM and hear from them what their recommendations are regarding. Just to be clear, you know, we, we have had changes recommended to us. I would like to hear from CONSCOM specifically what they think of those changes.
I agree. I mean, I, I agree with that. I mean, this is, this is, this is not the Board of Selectmen's program. We were, we were put in charge of making the decision, but we're not, we're not the instigators of the program. On the other hand, we've, if in fact, what we've heard tonight, and I, I don't doubt it, and I agree, I don't think we need to, I don't think a, a understory study is going to tell us anything specific to Carlisle that we're not, that we can't, I think we can use generic data. I have no problem with that whatsoever. On the other hand, if in fact, what we heard, from what we heard tonight, we need to take thirty or so deer per year, clearly, the plan that was put in place two years ago failed us that. We took ten the first year, six the second year, plus whatever, whatever was taken on private land. If, if in fact, what, what, what I would like to hear, if we're going to meet with CONSCOM, is that given the proposed plan that we've heard, we heard a month and a half ago, and then again tonight, of adding land, adding some hunters, that this will accomplish that goal, then I'm prepared to vote for it. If in fact, they don't believe that, and, and then I probably will not. And I think that's, that's the approach we need to take. I don't think we need to spend a lot of money on understory studies. I think we can use those data. But what we have to know is that the, the plan we had in place so far clearly didn't meet the objectives of the, of the hunt. Will this revised plan move us either there or a lot closer to it? And if so, then it's probably worthwhile going forward with it. If not, then it isn't. And that, and I want to hear that from CONSCOM and Land Stewardship Committee and folks like that.
Luke?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And then, you know, another thing too is, you know, everybody talks about data, 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 right? I mean, I, I haven't seen any recent emails come through with data. I mean, like, we have nothing in our packet tonight. Is there any way we can get that information? You know, because actually, one of the comments makes a good point that, you know, that Bob Zoggs' estimate and, and Don Allen's estimate are two very different things. So which one's accurate? You know, I, I mean, obviously, they're both coming in with good intentions and, and trying to prove their point, and I don't think anybody comes in and intentionally misleads. I hope nobody does. But, you know, I, I mean, like, you know, this is kind of one of the things that, that goes on at, at meetings, is that, you know, we get presented information. We never really have time to fully vet it, and then we're asked to make a decision. So, you know, is there any way that, you know, folks who have information, I know we have gotten drips and drops over the past year or so, but if you have information, the folks that are on this call, if you have information, please send it to Tim. You know, where you got your information, from where you got your numbers from. You know, if we can get some of the information, the regional browsing data. You know, because then there's the, the, the whole idea that the regional, regional browsing stuff is accurate. And, and, you know, we hear from other people that, you know, these are really, you know, micro environments. Each land is really a micro environment. So I, I don't know. And, and like Nathan says, you know, you know, we're not necessarily here to, to vet the science. But, you know, it'd be nice if we could all get on the same page to figure out exactly, you know, what we all agree on and, and how we can move forward. And, you know, and CONSCOM, Board of Selectmen, Deer Committee, you know, and, and, I don't know, just, it, it, it's just too much information. I don't know what's accurate, you know, and a lot of changes. I just, I don't know. It just seems like a lot to try to figure out all of a sudden. So that's why I, I still, at this point, I still think, you know, suspending a year, figuring out what we need to do and do it right. You know, obviously, you know, a couple of years hasn't made a difference. If we suspend for a year and figure this out, then I don't think that would make a difference either. But just my two cents at this point.
Well, the, the difference that it would make, Luke, is we wouldn't be able to find out if the new plan worked better than the old plan.
Yeah, but we don't really have a new plan. I mean,
No, no, we do.
But it, but it's not. It's changed lands, add some lands, add some hunters, you know, talk to...
We wouldn't know, would we, call more deer that way, or, you know, fewer? And I think we, we're close to it with the private lands, apparently, because the private deer call is around thirty per year, is what I understand. And we added six. It would be nice to have a few more on the public lands. That's what I gathered from the presentation.
And, and in fairness to the Deer Committee, they did present us this revised plan a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
Right. No, exactly. But, but, you know, I'm just saying, it, it, obviously, you increase the lands, you increase the number of hunters, you should increase the number that you kill, right? I mean, you know, so that, that's kind of common sense. But, but, you know, it's, there's, you know, one, I guess, you know, are we gonna, so, okay. Because we also discussed last time, you know, if we increase lands, are we going to take them away? And now we're not going to take away green, you know, which, fine, you know, I mean, I ju, I, I just don't really know what the full plan is. And then are you going to talk to, to Butters? Because if the five hundred foot setback is, is obstructive, then, you know, maybe we need to, you know, Weston did it, maybe we need to do it, but that takes time to do. You know, I just, I, I don't know. I just, you know, obviously, you increase the number of hunters, you increase the lands, then, yeah, you're, you're going to increase the kill. But is it actually, I don't know, does it actually make a difference? So I, I don't know.
I guess that's what we need CONSCOM to tell us.
Yeah, with, with actual information, you know, with actual facts.
I'm not sure what CONSCOM's schedule looks like. Alex, I assume you guys are pretty busy meeting.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of applications and, you know.
However, excuse me, we do need to kind of put this question to bed. And I'm here in the sense of this commu, this committee is that they need reaffirmation from CONSCOM and the trustees, that this is a goal that is really important for those two bodies to achieve and to, and to kind of maybe redefine what the goal, you know, really is. Is it a certain number of, of kills? And, and what they think that that, what they think, excuse me, that will achieve. So, Tim?
Can I, can I just add one thing is, I want to remind the board that what started with the things is that it's a, each one is an independent item, so we could decide that we want to do some and not others. And that was kind of what we were asking for the guidance from, is which ones of these make sense. So you don't have to do all of them. We're, you know, we're, we're happy to pick and choose. And if you're, have a favorite, you know, we could do that. I, I should mention that we intentionally went first to the Board of Selectmen to kind of get a high-level overview of what direction you wanted us to take. And so the specifics of these ideas has not yet been presented to CONSCOM or the Land Stewardship Committee. So...
So I think what's happened is that this little, got turned on its head, and we actually would rather he went and got the guidance from them and bring it back to us, because we don't know what the goal is that we're shooting for. Is that, Luke, you...
Yeah, no, that, that's exactly it. I mean, you know, it, you know, I, because that's the thing. I don't know what's going to make a difference, changing lands, adding hunter, I, you know, I mean, common sense tells you certain things, right? But, but I don't know. You know, I mean, CONSCOM, and I was on CONSCOM for six years, you know, but, you know, they know the lands better than we do now. They know the situation better than we do now. And, you know, hopefully, they have a better handle on, on the data and the information. So, yeah, I, I just think it's better, you know.
Here's another question for us, though. Do we want to try to just do this together? And do it, you know, one swell foop in a form with all the stakeholders all at one time? And then we just make a, a decision at the end of it? Or do we want to kick it back to them first? I'm trying to, you know, streamline this as much as possible.
Yeah, I, I think we do it all together. That'd be probably more productive.
Nathan, you have a, I'd love to do this before we go off the board.
So, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I think, you know, I think it should be a joint meeting. You know, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we can't be meeting in, in, in person. And so I guess we, we just need to deal with that. But I, I think, I think it should be a joint meeting. And again, you know, I'm not, I am not against the hunt. I just need to hear from CONSCOM that, that these changes make sense.
Okay. So, Tim, would you please do us the favor of coordinating an ASAP meeting, joint meeting with the Deer Committee, the CONSCOM, and the Trust Board?
Land Stewardship.
And Stewardship.
Yeah, so Jonathan, I'm thinking it might make sense then to take what your, your presentation tonight and get that to the members of those committees, as well as sending it out to the board, the Board of Selectmen. But particularly since they won't have, they haven't heard any of this, right? For them to be able to take a look at it. And I don't know, Alex, if there's any opportunity before the joint meeting for the CONSCOM to just, among themselves, have a chance to talk, talk about it. But I think it'd be worthwhile to have as much sort of advanced discussion so people can think through the issues, and also so that CONSCOM can, you know, sort of come to this meeting with some...
Heads up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I like it a little stronger than that. I like to have a recommendation from them based on a specified plan. I don't want to see a Chinese menu where we pick, pick two from column A and one from column B. That's not what we, that's not what the Board of Selectmen ought to be doing. We ought to be dealing with a recommendation from the people who know best, and then we can make a decision based on that.
Okay, so you don't want our joint meeting to happen before those, those other two committees have had the presentation from the Deer Committee and they iron all that up?
I don't think it's valuable, because that way the, the responsibility isn't set.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, that's, Tim, you understand, and Jonathan, and the Deer Committee, understand what we're asking of you?
Yes, we're to go and talk to the Land Stewardship Committee and come and present them this information and ask their recommendations to be sent to you.
And I'm sorry we couldn't come to that March 10th, when we first heard it, but we just, I guess, we weren't in the right space to really understand, you know, where the responsibilities lay. And I think this, this has clarified it.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest that we call the joint meeting to adjourn. And Barney and Alex, I need a motion in a second on that.
So moved.
All right, joint meeting adjourned. So thank you, Kate. Thank you, Board of Selectmen. We'll take care of this and get back to you.
And thank you guys again. Because I know this is painful. Okay. We're going to move on to our Board of Selectmen input. Tim, did Wayne want to talk to us?
Wayne, I think he was hoping that there might be some town meeting discussion. He said if, and he did crop up to text him, he'd come back on the call. But I don't think he, I don't think that's going to occur tonight.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I think the Finance Committee is coming in next Tuesday, and I think there'll be a lot of...
Better time to do it. Okay. Just wanted to be sure that we weren't messing up on that. So we're going to take, it's eight, it's nine o'clock almost, and we're going to take our eight fifteen agenda item, which is the Board of Selectmen input to the 2020 Open Space Plan. And unless people had objections, I didn't see the point of, of reinventing the wheel. We have what was in the last plan, and I was, was wondering if we couldn't just go step through it and amend it and bring it up to date. But I didn't see rewriting it unless other people had other ideas about this.
I mean, I did read through it, and it appears that, I mean, the, the recommendations, the, the plan, the processes, the initiatives are all good, and they, most, most of them certainly are still applicable. And I, and I, and many of them obviously haven't even been met. So I think we just move ahead with what exists.
Okay. Okay. In fact, I, that's the way I felt. I did have one or two questions about some of them, but I want to get comments from other people first before I launch myself.
I, I read through it as well, and there are a couple of particular things that, like I wasn't totally clear about under land acquisition, that we, we, in particular, were supportive of appropriate potential actions regarding preservation of both the Western Corridor and the Concord River Reservation areas. I mean, I'm not quite sure why the, whether that is still appropriate as something that's, you know, drawn out particularly, but maybe that's something for, I mean, maybe that's something that CONSCOM or would, would, if that's still part of what they're working on. I mean, largely, this, this, the Board of Selectmen's piece of this is basically about supporting other boards and committees and their initiatives.
Actually, we, number three, that's number three under land acquisition, and we've actually done that.
Okay.
That was when we bought the, when the state came and bought the, the land.
Oh, the pig farm?
Yes.
Oh, whoa, whoa, okay. So anyway, that, you know, that could be updated then.
Yeah. Nathan, you have any?
You're muted, Nathan.
No, I think that, you know, just modifying what's there and not doing a complete rewrite makes complete sense.
Okay. So what I propose, and I would like to just step through it, the overview. Did anybody have anything that they would like to change about the overview? And I, I, my question, my major question is, there are one, two, three bullets. Did we want to make it two bullets, or did we want to add one bullet? And the bullet that I thought, okay, so the three bullets are, we support, you know, an excellent educational system, the conservation and protection of our unique physical environment, and the maintenance of small, strong, small-town communities. and the maintenance of small, strong, small-town community values that support the needs of all of our citizens. Did we want to, is there anything we wanted to change about that? Add or subtract?
Well, um, just because of my participation on the master plan, um, you know, there, and I don't know how, how this plays into this and, you know, how, how signi- how much time we really want to put into this have significant, it is what this actually says for the Board of Selectmen, but, um, you know, there's a whole piece about sort of, um, uh, looking at our, um, our approach to housing, um, and conservation and sort of promoting partnerships, to, and providing sort of more diversity of housing in Carlisle. I mean, maybe that's too specific, but, um.
Well, it is because we're talking about open space, um, so unless you've tied it.
But it's the use of the open space, right? I mean, there's, right, you could use open space for all kinds of things. I mean, in fact, there's even a particular bullet in here about affordable housing. I'm trying, it's.
There is one, and that's where I would put it, rather, I would, um, but I don't know, maybe somebody else has another idea about that. The administrative, I thought, I, I don't see anything that needs to be changed. We're gonna be actively involved in the recruitment and prompt appointment of qualified personnel to the committees. We'll work to see the emergency technology with, uh, you know, and work with the appropriate committees to see that the budget issues or requests are dealt with. Yeah, I hope we're, we're still doing that. The land acquisition, I had more problems with personally. I think number three and number four needed to be looked at. Number three is the Board of Selectmen in particular is supportive of appropriate potential action regarding the preservation of both the, oh, that, right, that's the one that, um, that you brought up. I think, um, that we needed to, to check that one. And number four, I would like to add something at the end. It says the Selectmen will work with appropriate committees to determine in the conceptual phase of an action, if it may make sense to include an affordable housing initiative. And I wanted to add, or other municipal use.
Yep, I agree with that. Yeah, I, I, I think one of the things that we really need to take from all of this and what we've seen over the past few years is that, you know, we're typically woefully unprepared to make a decision or an action on a property when it comes up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I agree with that, Kate, a hundred percent.
Okay, so I will add that. I thought the land stewardship, there weren't, there weren't any problems except, uh, until number five. The Selectmen will work to facilitate the long-term extension of the Cranberry Bog, Bog lease and assist in protecting Carlisle's rights and interests relating to the potential waterwell field in the Chelmsford section of the Bog. I mean, I still agree with that, but I'm not sure if it's written the right way.
Well, and I'm not sure we're talking about a long, a long-term extension of the Cranberry Bog lease. This is the lease to Mark Duffy.
Yeah, that's gone already.
It's gone, right, so we need to, maybe it's, uh, something that says, uh, you know, facilitate the, um, the planning to preserve the Cranberry Bog as a natural resource or something, you know, what the Cranberry Bog works.
Facilitate, promote, I, I use something word like that, support, um, planning. Okay, I will, I will redraft that one and send it to you guys.
And the other one, of course, is right underneath at the active recreation number.
Yes, that's. Yes. What do we want to do about that? Active recreation, the Selectmen will support the investigation of a strategy and plan for the potential creation of a Carlisle Community Center. We want to leave that in? I see, Alan, you're muted, but I think I saw your lips say no.
Yeah, you, you saw my lips say no, not because I'm against it, but because I'm not prepared to unequivocally support it until we see what the plans are.
Right. Uh, well, it says, support the investigation of a strategy and plan.
That's fine.
Uh, I think one, one thing, though, that always concerns me is that, you know, if you're, there's often assumption that when a plan is created, that there's gonna be support of the implementation of that plan.
Yeah.
If it's written in this way, so, um, I, I guess, I, I'm not sure that I, that I support having that in there as written.
As written, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we need to modify it.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and then the rest was about the Trails Committee, maintaining our trails and working with the Rec Commission to understand the key initiatives and working with appropriate committees to explore potential extensions to the path network. So I, I had no problem. So let me try to.
Say, hang on, let me just point out one thing under recreation. It does say, um, under number three, the Recreation Commission, and I'm just thinking about what we're going through right now with these, with the budget planning. The board's committed to maintaining at a minimum the level of resources that we currently enjoy. This isn't, we're not talking financial resources. We're talking about the actual physical recreational resources.
Uh, and, and I think that's what we did mean, and do you want to be explicit? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, let's be explicit.
So it isn't confused.
So that's number three.
Three, yeah.
And I'm gonna put explicit, um, about.
The level of physical resources, yeah.
Resources. Okay, so I will take on redrafting those points unless somebody writes me with another point that they think should be redrafted, and then I will get those to you ASAP so I can get them to David, so he won't bother me. He hasn't, he hasn't been bothering me. I, I would really like to give this to him as my.
Before he starts bothering me.
Yeah, we've been, we've been sitting on it a long time.
Yes, we have. He asked us a long time ago, and I really want to give this to him. Okay. Thank you very much, guys. Um, Town Administrators Report.
Okay, just a few items in the report for this week. Uh, in your packet, you'll see a letter from the Historical Commission regarding the red brick building that, um, next to CPS. And they're concerned with the planned renovation project to replace the windows at the building, and they've requested a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss it. Just by way of background, the brick building is under the care and control of the School Committee and not the Board of Selectmen, also not in the historic district. So two things you should know. Uh, Rec Department has for, you know, the past several years worked with the school. The school's been very generous in letting Rec use the building. They've done, Rec has done small maintenance projects over the years. And, uh, right, most recently, they've been discussing, you know, a three-year arrangement for Rec to stay in the building. The windows were a project they had discussed. The thirty thousand dollar estimate was just that. It was a, a price quote that they got and rejected. So there's not a thirty thousand dollar window replacement project that's ongoing. Uh, but I think maybe that the Commission should be directed to the School Committee because they, they do control the building. And I know they have concerns about, uh, you know, the replacement of the windows and whether they're appropriate. But it is not a building that the Selectmen control.
Is it actually in the historic district?
It's not.
It's not.
No. So it's basically just a, a historic building, but, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, they're, they're offering to put it on the register so that regardless whether it's in the district or not, it's, then it has, it goes under the rules of the historic. And it's not particularly something I would support, especially now when we have lots of maintenance and we don't want to make it more expensive than we need to. I don't know what other people feel about it. So do, do we want to just direct him to tell them to talk to the school?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would say, yeah, they should talk to the school and, and, and let us know how that goes. You know, I, I don't think we should just punt it over to the school, but, you know, we should, we should ask them to go talk to the school and then let us know how it goes.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Uh, second item, just a reminder that the Town Caucus is next Monday evening, February eighth, uh, May eighteenth at five PM. And the parking lot of the Congregational Church is being held outdoors. And, uh, attendants will register for the caucus as they drive in to the parking lot, and they'll be directed to a parking spot by a member of the Police Department. And, um, the, the planning is going very well for that. We, we think it's gonna be very successful. And, uh, both the chiefs have been involved and the town clerk and, and myself. Uh, so just a reminder that, that it's starting earlier than usual at five PM, before it gets dark. And it's, uh, the Congregational Church next Monday afternoon at five.
And it's BYOFC. Bring your own face covering.
That's right, bring your own face covering. Exactly. Yeah, sanitizer. Okay, item number three, uh, you'll see another letter in the packet from a resident of Captain Wilson Way, who, uh, has a concern with, uh, members of the Trails Committee cutting brush, um, so forth on what he considers to be his property. He wanted the board to be aware of his concerns and requesting that the town repair the damage done to his property. I mean, it sounds like kind of a classic misunderstanding to me, but, uh, this resident did want the board to get the letter and to be aware of it, so.
Uh, well, I think.
Has it been investigated?
Is it on his property?
It, I, I, I don't know. I only know what he says in his letter. We haven't reached out to the Trails folks either.
I, I think it does need to be investigated, and I think if, if the Trails Committee damaged his property, um, he does need to be, uh, recompensed for it. And I just want to make sure it wasn't deer.
Yeah, and.
Disguised as a Trails Committee member.
Yeah.
So.
Has anybody been in touch with the, Tim, any, any outreach to the Trails Committee or?
Uh, none, none yet, no.
Huh. So I, I guess we would like to direct you to please investigate this, um, situation and, uh, let us know.
Yeah, this, this, this comes up usually once or twice a year. And I'm not knocking the Trails Committee or anything that they do. Um, you know, they have a very thankless job. Um, but yeah, I wonder if there's some way that, you know, there could be some sort of notification system, you know? I mean, and I, maybe it's just these guys just say, well, I'm gonna go and tackle this. But, you know, I, I, it just seems like this would work a lot better if, you know, the folks whose property you were going near.
You know what? I think this is a policy that, you know, we've, we've stopped doing policies. But I think, um, maybe we need to, um, draft up a policy for them or for anybody that goes on, um, non-town property or whatever, um.
Yeah, yeah, because there was an issue, was it last year with, you know, somebody from the Trails Committee, you know, reported that somebody's treehouse was on one of the trail, you know? And it led into this big hoopla. It wasn't, right? It was, it was on their property. Um, you know, so I mean, I think, I think those things can be resolved quick if you just notify folks ahead of time. Um, you know, maybe we work with the butter list. We have, you know, email chain set up where, you know, Trails is gonna go out to Davis Quarter, wham, it just a mass email goes out to everybody that's in a butter, and they all know, and, um, you know, I mean, this is, I think, you know, Captain Wilson Way, it seems like it's probably a little more obscure one. But either way, you know, folks should be notified and, you know, and, and if, right, if they did do damage to somebody's private property, then we have to be.
Well, let's, let's find out what's, what's the actual case.
Yeah, I, I agree. We need to find out. And then I think we should write a letter.
Yeah.
To Trails.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry for, um, go ahead, Alan.
Well, I'm just saying, let's, yeah, let's, I, I don't, I mean, I, I hate to put a whole bunch of new regulations in place for, for a volunteer committee to do, uh, unless, if it isn't necessary. I mean, if it's necessary, that's fine, but it's.
Okay, well, but we should write them a letter and say, um, you know, we receive this and we would, you know, we would appreciate it if you would, or, you know, or you should, maybe they should write their own regulation.
Well.
Let's find out what ha- what, what their side of the story is.
Yeah.
If it can be resolved amicably, let's try that first.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I would suggest, too.
Uh, I interrupt in saying that I'm a member of the Trails Committee, and I'm still listening, and I am not aware of the Trails Committee doing any work in the vicinity there. So.
Well, a, a, an individual, specific individual was named in the letter, so it's easy enough to find out.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, happy to follow up on that. And then we just have our, our upcoming meetings listed. As I mentioned, the Finance Committee is coming, uh, next Tuesday night. They have a meeting next Monday to, uh, kind of, uh, assimilate what they've, they've, uh, heard from the various departments and have a recommendation for the board on the budget, uh, some of the financial articles and the warrant for the, uh, town meeting in June. We still believe it will be in June. We don't know, but we're planning anyway.
Well, in fact, um, actually, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Tim, but.
Go ahead.
We, we, we did get a letter from the, um, Chair of the Board of Selectmen of, um, Car, Concord. I'm sorry, I'm getting really tired. I can almost not talk anymore. And, uh, we are hoping to set up a joint meeting with them and the two FinComs as well, I believe, to talk about, um, town meeting date, because they have already voted to not have the June twenty-second town meeting. And so we need to talk, they wanted to talk to us, and we were supposed to find out, like, somebody's supposed to find out whether we could take, for instance, the, um, CCHS, um, portion, uh, out of our budget and into a separate warrant and have it voted on at a different time so that we don't vote that budget before Concord votes the budget. So there's, there's a bunch of things that we need to look into. I, I don't know, were you able to get in touch with them yet?
Get, get in touch with the Town Council on that question?
Well, no, sorry, with Concord.
I, I have not. I just, they wanted the two moderators involved and also the chairs of Selectmen and Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we haven't organized that yet, but.
All right, I just, I didn't know, because I forwarded that to Tim.
Um, can I just ask about the FinCom coming, uh, to the Board of Selectmen next Tuesday? Um, are they, are they making, uh, sort of a specific recommendation to us? Are we just getting sort of their general feedback? Because my reason for asking is that, um, I find it's really hard if we don't get the, the, you know, the numbers from them ahead of time to be able to assimilate everything in, in, you know, in a conversation, especially if we're having to do it this way, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, again, I don't know what their plan is for how much specificity they are bringing, but I'd really, really like to get advance, uh, information of, of what they're gonna present.
I think they're planning after those two nights of hearings they had last night and tonight. They're meeting, I think, again on Thursday, uh, and, and the following Monday as well to develop those specific recommendations.
Right, so I don't know if they'll be really ready before Tuesday to, you know, and they might send us something Monday night, but I don't know.
Yeah, but.
Or you say during the day, just something that you have a hard copy, you know, some, an email, you could, or a spreadsheet or something that, um, yeah.
So I want you to know that I listened to all those presentations, and I, I want to say also, I think Tim did a great job, but I want you to know that he reached his five percent by, um, cutting our salaries, so.
Does that mean, does that mean we?
That's a joke.
We have to give up the company car, too?
You just got it, yeah. Uh, so anyway, uh, yeah, that was, that was painful to listen to all that. There's no question. But I think, I do think people rose to the challenge and made, you know, they did the best they could. I wish, the schools were not as, um, what's the word? As granular, let's say, you know, in, in letting us know. Um, they just raised a lot of things that could happen, you know? They didn't say, well, you know, here's, uh, what it would look like. It was, it was a, whereas tonight, the, I thought CCHS, in fact, unfortunately, I didn't get to hear the whole thing, was very, it was much more concrete, uh, much more concrete, solid, um, presentation. it was much more concrete, a much more concrete, solid presentation. And you knew, you could feel much, have a better feel for what was going to happen.
Well, I think the CPS presentation, they were trying to avoid alarming people.
I understand that, but that's, but it was almost more alarming because there was too much thrown at the wall in certain respects. But anyway.
Is Concord going through the same kind of exercise?
They are. And they went through it for us. And they, but they had already foreseen that things were going to be bad. So they had already started closing out things. They have a very good financial guy there. I was very impressed with him. He's, you know, he's on top of it. He was closing out everything. He's saving as much as possible. They froze everything, not just discretionary. They froze everything. And then they said, anything you want, you know, even for COVID, for running your classes, you have to come to us and ask for it. So they are, they really got control of it. And I should say, even when the last couple of years, while they were building their budgets, they were building it, they were doing zero-based because she was new. And rather than just build on the old budgets, she wanted to know exactly why did you need this? Why did you need that? And it's true, things get put into budgets 15 years earlier, then they lose their utility. And but yet they're still in the budget and it never seems to go out. So, and I think Tim actually identified a couple of things like that in our budget. And that's where he got some of our savings. So I was impressed, Tim, just.
You did a good job, Tim.
Just have a quick question. So, you know, I totally get, you know, we have COVID-19, everything's shut down. We want to try to save money. What, you know, I don't think that we've kind of discussed, like, what is our goal, right?
Yeah.
I think our responsibility is identifying what the priorities are in the town. And then FinCom is to figure out how we're going to pay for those priorities. You know, I've heard the number 5% thrown out there. I know we've never talked about it.
No.
I'm just wondering, what have we done as far as giving, well, I guess I know we haven't done anything. But should we be doing something to give direction on what our goal is in reducing the budget? And how that goal fits into what we see as the priorities for this year as modified because of what's going on?
Okay. I think you're right. It probably is, the goal has come from the other direction, was came a lot, large part from the FinCom that worried that there will be, that we'll have some problems with receipts down the line. And that we might have, in fact, some extra expenses due to the COVID. So they keep on talking in terms of, they want to keep their powder dry. So they want to have a little bit in reserve so that if something comes up suddenly that they, that nobody has been able to foresee because of the, kind of the uncertainty, that they have, that we have reserves and that we have reserves without having to raise taxes in order then to pay for this extra thing. So that's where they came, and I think also, sorry, so that I think this 5% came in that way, sort of, that this would be some sort of a good number to have, like, in reserve.
Yeah. It just seems like coming up with a number, you know, without thinking about what our priorities are and what it might take to do those seems a little bit backwards to me.
Yeah, and, you know, I just support Nathan, what you're, where you're going with this because I think that, well, that just applying a 5% across the board, while it may seem at one level, you know, fair, but it doesn't recognize whether there's priorities, right, to support.
Right.
Something. And the other thing I want to say is too, that the other part they've been looking at, at least that I've been hearing, is the decrease in state aid that they're anticipating. That's a big part of it, too, is the loss of, I think, weren't they using the number 1.5?
1.2.
1.2. Yeah. Basically, I mean, they're characterizing this as an exercise. They're not saying we're going to cut five, everybody 5%. And I think the 5% would then also include things like OPEB. So in order to, so for instance, if we found, gee, library really cannot cut 5% because if they do, they go below the MAR. And that has other unintended consequences and we don't want to do that, they might then find another place in the budget like OPEB, for instance. So they would do only 2.5% from the library and then they would maybe not fund OPEB as far as they would have otherwise. So they're still trying to conserve, keep the budget so that you're getting services and, you know, not cutting the services so that they're unrecognizable. But they're trying to help figure that out and give us a presentation. Obviously, it's our, going to be our final decision. But we also have to know how much money we have to deal with.
Well, it's not only that, but it's not a bad idea to ask the stakeholders, the boards and committees and employees of the town, what their priorities are. And that's really what the FinCom is doing. They're saying, what would be the effect on your operations if a 5% cut? And that tells you what their priorities are, right there. I mean, we're, this is, this is in response to an emergency. I mean, we set our priorities for the entire budget way back when. And that's talking about the fiscal '21 budget. And so if we had any more specificity than that, and frankly, we didn't do that very well. But that's when, that's when we should have done it. That would be our overall priorities. Then you start to talk about, what are your, what is your response to this emergency? If suddenly you were to lose $1.2 million out of your budget, what would you cut? And essentially, that's what FinCom is going through right now. And I think, and I think it's not at all inappropriate that they're asking the individual money spenders what they think their priorities are. That is, what would you cut if you weren't completely dependent upon the Board of Selectmen to make that decision for you?
Mm-hmm. And I think we have to be, I think we have to be willing to understand that at a certain point, if things got really bad economically, we might end up with much fewer, far fewer receipts. There might be people that just cannot make their tax payments. We cannot go out and borrow money. And so we need to have a reserve. And we don't have much reserve in this town right now. So this is what they're trying to do, is to build that reserve. Because if we don't, if we run out of money, there won't be any question that we will have to cut staff. We will have to be laying off people because we won't have money to pay them.
Yep.
So that's, I think, you know, what we're the worry because we don't know the extent or the length of this.
And we probably won't know until the fall.
We probably won't know until the fall. So we're trying, trying to make the best decisions with the, with the best information that we have, but it's not good information. We know that.
It's very changeable.
But if, at least we're trying to think forward.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's a bad exercise at all. I think I would just like us to be a little bit more involved in it as it's going along.
Well, here we are.
But we don't have anything, right? I mean, it's.
Well, I mean, what do we?
This isn't involved. This is talking about whether or not we're involved.
Okay, but I don't, I mean, I've been going to all the, to the FinCom meetings and I don't know how else to involve us, you know, or what, I don't know what I, what, without knowing if we can cut anything, if we can save any money and if there are going to be any, you know, receipts. I don't know how, what are we prioritizing? How do we prioritize stuff? I mean, maybe, maybe all those meetings should have been done jointly with us. Because.
Yeah, I mean, I guess on the surface, then, you know, when people come into those meetings and the boards are coming into those meetings, you know, obviously, Tim did his part, right? And was able to give something back. But, you know, what, what are most boards coming back with? I mean, is it, is it typically, oh, geez, we can't cut anything? Or is it, or is it, you know, we think we can cut a bit here and cut a bit there? I mean, you know, I think, yeah, I think a lot of people are going to be clamoring to get the school to give some money back, right? So I think we, yeah, we need to reach out to the school committee and push a little harder on them.
Absolutely. That's where all the money is, to tell you the truth, because.
Right, and, right. And the thing is, they need to be prepared and justified. You know, if Concord can come in and do it, why can't our school committee? You know, I mean, and, you know, I have two kids in the system and, you know, I, you know, I support the schools 100%, you know? But again, if we're asking everybody to cut and for clarity and, you know, openness on all of this, then, you know, it shouldn't be just some hand waving, well, we may need this, we may need that, from anybody. Right? They should be held to the same standard as everybody else. So, you know, I just, I, you know, I think I'd just like to know that. And, you know, I can't sit in on all these meetings. But, you know, if there were some way to get that information back. Or is that what FinCom, FinCom is going to do?
I think, I think what will, can happen is that the town side of the budget can be cut 5% and we can ask the school or tell the school that they will have 5% less money next year and they may cut whatever they want to cut. And the other thing that I, there was a small group meeting as well where I tried to say, you need to the school because they are holding a lot of money in reserve. They have a huge reserve fund, which is nearly 2% of their budget. And what I said to them was, you really need to release those funds back to the town and trust that if you were to get that other next SPED student that you didn't expect, that the town will backstop you and the town will come up with the excess, with the funds for you. Just like we came up, by the way, with the funds for their elevator, while they were prepaying, they were using some of their contingency funds on prepaying for SPED. So they, they need to be, those funds need to be kind of freed up so that there can be access from all the parts of the town that need them in crisis.
I'll just say, you know, having listened to most of the hearings, I think everybody came in with really, having made a really good effort and not the, you know, Jim O'Shea's president, the school's presentation was more vague. And I get the, you know, the politics of that. There were probably, I don't know.
There were a lot of teachers.
50 school staff on the call, you know, on that part of the FinCom hearing. But I have heard him in other settings make it clear that he really is committed to the school doing its share. And I'll just say that for the others that we heard, they were all coming up with, that I heard, they were all coming up with 5% in very specific terms, so.
Good.
All right.
Can the town play the lottery?
The only question is, where do we get the buck from?
Yeah. It ain't easy.
No.
I spent a lot of sleepless nights, I got to tell you, trying to figure out how we're going to get through this.
But we will.
We will.
We will.
But I think, honestly, I think what the FinCom are doing is a very valuable exercise. I think it's got everybody thinking. And I think it has raised awareness for the schools because they have listened to a lot of the other cuts and, you know, and seeing that there's absolutely no wiggle room anywhere in any of these other budgets. They've got lots of wiggle room and there's lots, there's some budgets. In fact, one of the ones, in fact, Board of Health, they have 98%, they're, 98% of their budget is staff. And 2% of their budget is others, is other. So they don't have 5% to cut without cutting staff. That's, you know, so that's one of the ones I would not support taking 5% out of. I think their new plan is absolutely the right thing. And I, and I think this, you know, they're going to need to do that succession plan and they need the extra depth in the health agent. So personally, I support that one very highly. Say, it's going to be all of us that have to make that decision.
Yep.
So anybody want to adjourn?
So are we going to have some candidates at the caucus after all this?
God, I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to even show up. I mean, I got to come from Rockport. Drive all the way down. I still don't have a house. And I can't stay overnight because the dust is so thick from the, all the, you know, from the plastering and stuff.
We can nominate you without, without you being there.
Yeah, I was nominated.
I was nominated and I wasn't there.
Yeah.
Nathan did that for me one year and then I didn't sign the papers.
Oh.
That is true.
All right.
Do we know, do we know who's running?
Oh.
I'm still deciding.
Is the mosquito doing any?
I believe Chris Geggis, who is on the call, he's been talking about running. I believe he's going to run. I heard Dave Modell is going to run. I haven't heard whether Nathan's running.
No, you haven't.
Look at that poker face.
I'm going to nominate him on Monday.
And then he's not going to sign the papers. If you get nominated, would you run?
You putting me on the spot right here?
No, it's a public meeting, no.
Okay.
All right.
I move, will you adjourn?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not taking a roll call. We're all.
All right.
I was going to close the meeting before we have a chance, right? You know, oh, I was going to do it, but, oh, wait, 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 minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Shoot, sorry.
Nathan already skipped out on us.
It's okay. The only change I had was Wednesday, March 25th. The rest of them.
I even missed that one.
Go with it. I mean, there was a bunch of typos, I don't care.
Yeah, I read through it for content, it seemed funny. So we need a motion to approve the minutes, right?
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 25th, March 31st, April 2nd, April 7th, and April 7th.
I'll move.
Okay, that will do a roll call. Louis.
Arnold, aye.
Aye.
Pascal, aye.
Read aye. Okay, great. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
It's seven o'clock tomorrow morning, right?
Wait, wait, what? I've been missing meetings lately. I've been busy.
Yep. We have a meeting every day, so it doesn't make any difference, yep.
Yeah, okay.